Bonjour ! Bienvenue ! C'est le programme Skylar Learns French. Je suis votre host. Je m'appelle Skylar et je prends le français. Euh... Let's get into it ! Skylar Learns French as he does. Okay. How'd you like the theme song ? We're working on it. Okay, we're working on it. Um... Bienvenue ! Euh... Et... Bonjour ! Salut, ça va ? Je m'appelle Skylar et... Je suis un... Je suis débutante. Je suis... Fatiguée aujourd'hui. Euh, je suis... Euh, I'm losing it already. Can't even improv up here yet. Um, welcome to my French learning podcast? I guess? Videocast? Whatever this is. Um, anyway, I'm on my third 30-day challenge here. To learn French. It's actually a six-month challenge. But 30 days is less intimidating. Anyway, welcome ! Off to a great start ! This is day five of my 30-day challenge. To speak French every day, study French every day, do flashcards, show you my progress. I'm laying it all out here. I'm being really exposed. You guys get to see how weird I am, how dumb I am, how I don't actually know how to do this, but I'm working on it. And, uh, come along for the ride. You can teach me, or you can learn with me, or you can make fun of me. It's all good. This is for me. Uh, and... Maybe for you? I don't know. I don't even know who watches this. But, if you're watching, I thank you and I hope you're having fun. Let's get into our lessons. So the way we've been doing this... Uh, hey from, from Caroline and Jack. People are commenting and watching. This is great. I love it. I can't wait... I cannot wait to make a fool of myself in front of you all. It's gonna be fun. The, uh... The way this is working right now is I am taking over Sweetroot's channel to broadcast to you. I'm going to go through some flashcards for about 10 minutes. Hopefully, remember a lot of the things that we did last time. Then for another 10 minutes, I'm gonna try to do some reading out loud to make my mouth do the sounds and kind of group words together, hear them in context. And then we're gonna do 10 minutes of listening. And if I can ramble long enough here and stall, then I don't have to do the full 30 minutes. Alright, you're catching on. I'm a little ADD and, uh, yeah. But here we go. Let's jump into it. On y va ! Okay, so... I'm gonna pull up my screen. You guys can see this. You can see me. Okay, we're all doing good here. And we're gonna go through it. First, we're gonna go through all of the ones that I've starred. These are things that I have been messing up. Okay. Cuillère. Cuillère. Dang it, I keep messing this pronunciation up.
Une cuillère.
Cuillère. Une cuillère. But I do remember, this is a spoon. Une cuillère. Oh yeah, killing it already. Off to a good start. Le feu. This is a stove? It is a stove. Wait, hold on, I'm going back. I'm unmarking these guys. I got this guy right too. Okay? Wait, is it taking it off the stars? Yes, it is. Okay. Mallection. Mallection. This is a blender. Heck yeah ! Pianterre. Pianterre? Pi... Alright, we gotta listen.
Pietiner.
I'm hitting my mic. Pienter? Pienter.
Pietiner.
No. Pitiner. Pitiner.
Pietiner.
Pitiner. Pitiner. And this is that weird word, uh, verb, to trample. Yes. Pitiner. Pitiner. Why it's in our things? It's because a dog was trampling on some flowers. That's what they wanted to put in there. Pitiner. This has to stay in. Placard. That is a cupboard. Garde-robe. This is a wardrobe. And a bibliothèque. This is a bookshelf. I think I got that right last time. Okay. Poignée.
Poignée.
Poignée. This is a... Poignée. A... No ! It's a handle ! Poignée. How do you... What's the device to remember this? Okay. The best way to get a handle on a situation is to be poignant. No? You think we can... Maybe, maybe that'll be the one that sticks. Is to be poignant. Poignée. The best way to get a handle on a situation is to be poignant. Okay. We'll see if we get it tomorrow. Serviette. This is a towel or a napkin. Yay ! Tenir. Tenir.
Tenir.
Tenir. Okay, this is to stand or to hold. We need this in context. I need to like actually look this guy up. Okay. Toit. Oh, I have this one. This is a roof. Okay. Vassiele or assiette. These are dishes. Les assiettes. Or les assiettes. Right, les assiettes. Okay. Vole. Vole.
Vole.
Vole. To steal. Don't vole. It's bad. C'est pas cool. Okay. Alright. That was, uh, all the trouble ones from yesterday. We're... My intro took longer. Maybe by design. So... Let's see if we can get it like a speed round here. Study all 96 terms for the next three minutes. Okay, here we go. À la maison. At the home. Accrocher, hang. Aller dans. Uh, to go in. Yes. Une assiette. A plate. Yes. Aussi, also. Avec, with. Un bateau, a boat. Blanc, blanche. White. Bois, wooden, made of wood. Un breuvage, a beverage, a drink. La catacuche. Ow ! I hit my head again. Okay. Cat... Catacuche.
Le catacuche.
Speed round. Le catacuche. Le catacuche. We gotta hear some people talk about rubber things. If I can figure out how to say this one. Le catacuche. I'm starring it. I know it's rubber. Okay. Ceci, ce. It's this, that. This. Okay. Une chaise. There's a chair. Château. Château. There's a cat. Un chien. Un chien. Un chien. There's a dog. Le coin. The corner. Comfortable. Comfortable. Agréable. Agréable. This is, uh, comfortable. Courir. Courir.
Courir.
Courir. Pronunciation's not quite there. Not natural. Courir. Uh, this is to run. Une cuillère. This is the, um... Une cuillère. This is... Why? No, I know this one. A knife. A spoon ! Wait, I just did this one ! No ! Alright. Not in the long-term memory yet. Cuillère. That was a very Monty Python moment. Blue. No, wait ! Okay. La cuisine. This is the kitchen. Yay ! How we doing on time? Still running a little over and I'm at 20. Dans, in. Keep going. De, of. De, de l'autre cô... Co... De l'autre côté. À travers de. De l'autre côté. This is across from. Derrière. En arrière. This is behind. Le, water. Et, and. Être tubi. Li... Levier. Kitchen, sink, sink. Washer, sink. It's a sink. La fenêtre, window. Une fleur, flower. Le four, stove. The stove. Une fourchette. This is a... This is a fork. Yes. Les gaz, gas. Le grillpan, toaster. Gris, grill. Gros, grand, large. Il y a, there is. He, she, it. Image, is an image. Jardin. Let me make sure.
Jardin.
Jardin. I keep saying jardin. It's jardin, I think. How do you guys say that one? This is, uh... Okay, we gotta move. Keep moving. It's obviously a garden, okay. Yellow. Jean. Jean.
Jeanne.
Jeanne. E Jeanne. It's kinda like saying John. But like... Never mind. Keep going. Jeanne. Jolie, jolie. Beaux, belles. Beautiful, pretty people. Lavusé. Lavuse. Lavuse.
Laveuse.
This is a washer? Yeah. Lumière. A light. Lustr. Or chandelier. Chandely... Chandelière. How do we do this one? It's a chandelier.
Lustr, chandelier.
Chande. Not shand. How American are you? It's chand... Chandlier. Lustr, chandlier. Okay? Machine à café. Doing good here. That was a coffee maker. Mallection, we had this one just a second ago. Blender. Mélangeur, this is a mixer. Yes. Mère, si. I should... Mère... Not merci, merci. It's mère, is the si. Okay. Metal. It's metal? It is.
Metal.
Me... Metal. Metal. Okay. Me, wall. Nap. This is a tablecloth. Yes. Non, il est... Il n'y a pas. There is none. There aren't any... Something along those lines. Nous, us. We, us. Nouveau, nouvel, neuf, neu... This is new. Où is, or. Où is where. Oui is yes. Petit, petit, small. Pitiner. This is a, um... Just came up. Pitiner.
Pietiner.
Short-term memory is a problem. Um, pitiner is... Oh, this is to trample. The weird one that's not... Has nothing to do with a kitchen. Placard. Garde-robe, bibliothèque, cupboard. Placard, wardrobe, bibliothèque, bookshelf. Plafond. This is a, uh... Plafond is the ceiling? Yeah. Poignée. Gotta get a handle on this one. Boom ! Where's my, uh... Do I, do I have my... Yeah ! No, wait, this one. There it is. Yes, did it. Okay. We got a handle here. Poisson. This is a, this is a fish. Port, door. Poulet, chicken. Por is for. Pres, proche. This is près? Sorry, près, proche, is near. Prop, is clean. Prudente. Is, um... Careful? Is that what we said? A little super close on that one. Que, quoi, quel. What? Réfrigérateur. Or a frigo. As we learned in our little video we've been watching. Ronde, ronde. This is round. Rouge. Red. Sauv, dirty. Almost there. Secheois. Uh... No ! Dryer? Yes. I'm, I'm not even marking it. Rolling through it. Serviette. This is a napkin. Towel. Spacieux, this is spacious. Or spacieux or spacieuses. Man, I'm taking up way too much time on this. Sur, uh, is on. Sur le droit is on top. Oh, sorry. On the right. On the right, yes. Sur le gauche is on the left. Sur le dessus is on top of. Yes. Test is a glass. No, cup ! Tenir is to... Tenir?
Tenir.
Tenir. Tenir is a word that we just had for to stand or to hold. Te, tea. Téayer is a teapot. Téayer.
Tenir.
Téayer, is a teapot. Toit is a roof. Toit. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Toit.
Toit. Toit. Sorry for people who are paying attention to my accents. They're terrible. The pronunciation's terrible, I know. Vassiele. Assiette. Plates, dishes, sorry, dishes. Verre. A glass. Vert, vert is green. Vestibule, entre. This is a entryway hall. Cool. Viel, vieux. Viel. This is old. Ville. City. Vole. To steal. And vouloir, to want. Boom ! Okay. It took 15... It took about 15 minutes to get through all of the flashcards. We did go through a nice review session. Tried to keep it on the lightning round. I think I did, uh... B+. But we're a weekend. And we're in chapter one of this book. So I think if I can transfer those long-term memory, by the end of the week, we should be... Should be doing pretty good. Okay, let's jump over to the book, read some sentences. Oh lord. Look at all my things. This is such a mess. So embarrassing. Didn't even prep. Okay. Here we go. The worst. I'm, I'm really the worst, you guys. I'm so sorry. Okay. The plan should be that we get this a little bit closer first. Then, we read through this last section. Last section says... Oh no. My microphone's too far away. Okay. We're starting here. We left off up here earlier. We're starting here to finish off section B. Bay. Section B of this chapter. Ceci est une fleur. Four. Four. Ceci est une four. That's a stove, right? Yes. Ceci est une four. Il est situé près de la fenêtre. It is next to or near the window. Il est situé près de la fenêtre. Il est nouveau et pratique. So it is new and practical? New and... What is this? What's the translation? Practi... Convenient. Yeah, practical, convenient. Okay. I can see that. Il est nouveau et pratique. Is it... Are we referencing the stove right now? The stove is new, that's right. Ceci est une bouler... Bou... Bouleroi. Bouleroi. Okay. Let's go ahead and star that word to look up. That wasn't even in our vocabulary. Bouleroi. Bouleroi. Uh, what is that? Oh, this is a kettle. That's cool. Elle est sur la fois. For. Elle est sur la four au gaz. It is on the stove with... With what? With gas? What are we trying to say here? It is... Oh. Right. It is a gas. It is on a gas stove. Well, that makes a lot more sense than what my brain was trying to do. Okay. Elle est sur la fo... Fo... Fo au gaz. So, gas stove. Fo, for, for, for... For au gaz. For au gaz. And is it for or for? Yeah, I think so. Okay. Let's not get hung up. We'll come back to it 'cause we need to practice there. Fo au gaz is a gas stove. Elle est en mé... Metal. Elle est en métal avec une poignée... Poignée de la catacuche. Catacuche. Okay, let's just put all of the words that I can't say in the same sentence. Il est en métal. Me... Metal. Il est en métal avec... Metal avec une poignée de la... De catacuche. Okay, I think what we're saying is it is on metal. The kettle is on metal with a handle. A rubber handle. Poignée de catacuche. 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 Poignée de catacuche. Maybe that's right, I don't know. Oh yeah, I have translations. I'm dumb. It's right here. It... It is, that's... I lost my place. It is metal with a rubber handle. It is metal with a rubber handle. So when it says elle est en... En métal, it's not... It's on metal, that's dumb. It is metal. Okay. Près du réfrigérateur. Caroline ! Yay ! Hey ! We should speak French together. Près du réfrigérateur. Il y a... Il y a une lavasseill. Oh gosh, what are we saying here? Près du réfrigérateur? Next to the refrigerator, near the refrigerator. Il y a une... There is a... Lavasseill. A wa... A wash? A plate washer? Wait, a sink? Didn't we learn the word? A dishwasher? Oh ! Right. Right, that makes sense. Lave-vasselle. Okay. Uh, let's keep going, cuz I'm running out of time. Ceci est, oh, I'm gonna skip this sentence here. Okay. Uh... À la gauche, on the left, il y a une secheur. Secheur pour la vasselle. Uh, on the left, il y a une secheur, there is a dryer, pour la vasselle. Vasselle. For the dishes. Yay! Uh, ceci est une placard. There is a placard. Or, this is a placard? Um, a placard is a what again? A cupboard, oh, dang it. Ah! Placard, there's a cupboard, okay. Ceci est une placard. Il est accroché au dessus de levier. It, uh, it is hanging, accroché au dessus, au dessus, above de levier, the sink. Let's see if that was close. It hangs over the sink. Ab- not above, but over, yes. Au dessus? Au dessus? Au dessus de levier. How close am I, how, how, how am I doing here? Il est en bois. It is made of wood. Yay! We're almost done. Okay. Ceci est une serviette? This is a nap- napkin, napkin. Serviette. I cheated a little bit with my eyeballs there, you didn't see that? Uh, elle est dans la placard. It is in the cupboard de la cuisine. It is in the kitchen cupboard. Uh, placard de la cuisine. Elle est petite et propre. It is small and clean. Uh, ceci est une image. Elle est sur la me- la mur. There isn't, there's a picture. This is an image, it's on the wall. Il y a, il y a la mer et une bateau dans le tableau. It is a, it is the sea and a boat on the table. What? Uh... It's on the wall. There is the sea and a ship in the painting. Oh, table. Wait, I thought... Oh, tableau. That's a painting? Tableau. Okay, that's fun. That's a fun one. Uh, ceci est la table de la cuisine. This is the ki- kitchen table, right? Yes. Elle est située dans la coin. It is situated around the corner. Elle est la, large et en bois. Elle est large. Elle est large et en bois. Uh, it is big. Uh, and it is made of wood. No, there's, wait! Ah! Okay, I'm calling it quits. There's more on this page. I can't do anymore, guys. My brain is hurting. Um, but this is a good little group to pick up on tomorrow. I'll do my review, um... And you guys can watch me suffer through that! That'll be fun. Um, I'll also put my face up here next time, so you can see it, oh gosh, I'm running away. Coming back to you, okay? And, um, yeah, we got a couple people here, so, you know what? I haven't finished, I gotta go fifteen, or ten minutes over, cuz I gotta watch this video. So, last time, we... Um, I'm sure the caption, oh my, the captions. I didn't even think about captions! They're probably terrible. Uh... Caroline says catcuck is pretty hard to pronounce, don't worry. Um, maybe one day I'll get it. Uh... Okay, we're gonna jump back over to this video of us learning about breakfast things.
Super easy French. Aujourd'hui, je viens de me lever.
You guys can hear this, right?
Tout ce qu'on peut faire le matin comme activité. Allez, c'est parti! Alors, suivez-moi, on va faire un petit déjeuner.
Suivez-moi, on va faire un petit déjeuner. J'ouvre la porte.
Et on arrive. Un petit peu dans la cuisine bientôt.
What happens when I do this? Oh yeah. That's pretty good, right?
Suivez-moi, suivez-moi, venez. Voilà, n'ayez pas peur, n'ayez, n'ayez crainte. On va regarder un peu ce qu'il y a dans le frigo.
Le frigo, dans la frigo?
Il y a pas mal de trucs qui ont dans le frigo.
Il y a pas mal de trucs dans le frigo.
Par exemple, il y a ce, ce jus de fruit qui n'a pas de marque.
Ce jus de fruit qui n'a pas de marque.
Puis, bah, du lait.
Du lait.
Du très bon lait hongrois. Ils disent, nous aimons les produits laitiers hongrois.
Hongois?
Moi aussi, c'est vraiment délicieux. Du camembert, mais là, on va s'intéresser.
If you're just joining for the first time, we, I've watched this video about a hundred times. So, at this point, I'm just trying to say it back and, and I'm not even really trying to read the words. I'm just trying to hear it and be like, boom! Understand exactly what you're saying. So, I've got a five-minute video, that's what's happening. It's probably really annoying for you, but this is what I'm doing to learn.
Particulièrement au petit-déjeuner, comme on est le matin. Le matin, on mange en France.
Le matin, en France?
Et partout dans le monde. Un petit déjeuner. On a deux types de ya- Matin, le matin, on mange en France. Et partout dans le monde.
Et partout dans le monde. Un petit déjeuner.
On a deux types de yaourts différents. Ce yaourt là. Est un yaourt nature. Ça veut dire que c'est du yaourt tout simple. Et qu'il n'y a rien.
Ah!
Yaourt tout simple.
Okay.
Et qu'il n'y a-
Wait, I wanna catch that.
Yaourt nature. Ça veut dire que c'est du yaourt.
Ça veut dire que c'est du yaourt. Ça veut dire que c'est du yaourt. Catching those is really difficult for me, but I, it's super important. Ça, ça veut dire, grouped. Que ce, que ce. Ça veut dire que ce. Uh, que ce de yaourt tout simple.
Tout simple. Et qu'il n'y a rien qui a été rajouté dedans. Donc, c'est un yaourt où par exemple, on peut mettre du miel.
Du miel, honey.
Un très bon miel d'Acacia.
Très bon miel.
Et, euh, on peut mettre de la confiture ou du sucre, par exemple, ou donner un peu plus de goût. Pour moi, manger un yaourt nature, nature, c'est, c'est un peu hardcore quand même. Alors, en France, on prescrit de manger cinq fruits.
It's so fast.
C'est, euh, c'est un peu hardcore quand même. Alors, en France, on prescrit de manger cinq fruits et légumes par jour. Donc, tous les jours, j'essaie de manger des fruits et des légumes. Et le matin, parce que c'est un peu difficile de manger des légumes, j'essaie de manger des fruits. Donc, des pommes.
Let's do it again. Oh gosh. Is this like, does this feel just manic to you guys? It's just like, whoa, what is this dude doing? Um... Welcome to my madness!
J'essaie de manger des fruits et des légumes. Le matin, parce que c'est un peu difficile de manger des lég-
I like what he's saying here, though. Uh, donc, tous les jours, j'essayais, j'essaie de manger des fruits et des légumes. So, donc, every, so, donc, uh, tous les jours, every day, j'essaie de, de manger les fruits et des légumes. Okay, I wanna hear that.
Tous les jours, j'essaie de manger des fruits et des légumes. Et le matin, parce que c'est un peu difficile de manger des légumes, j'essaie de manger des fruits. Donc, des pommes.
Des pommes.
Des prunes.
Des prunes. Du raisin.
Et une poire.